What's up, Juan?
What's up, big bro? You got that video?
Hey, I'm the City Council. Public hearing agenda. February 25th, 2025, 5:30 PM roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews?
Present.
Councilman Leon?
Present.
Councilman Wales?
Present.
Councilman Divertario? Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Present.
The Wilbur Daniel Fair Award of Excellence Ceremony will be held immediately following our regular session agenda. Item number one upon the public hearing.
An ordinance to approve a front-facing variance by Jacqueline Howard for repositioning of a new mobile home from LA Restore concerning 110 and a half East Stovall Street, Charles Barsha.
Zach, if you could go back to the previous page, that one right there. I think this is probably the easiest to understand what's being requested here. So, the parcel that's highlighted in red is the current parcel that's owned by the property owner. She currently has a trailer toward the back, as you can see there, that runs east-west. She's getting a new trailer from Louisiana Restore that's a little bit larger in terms of its overall length, and it won't fit that east-west dimension. So, she's requesting a variance to run it north-south. It'll fit the parcel better in that configuration. This requires a variance because typically the front door of a home or mobile home has to face the street. This was reviewed by the Planning Department and by the Planning Commission and approved by them with recommendation to approve by the council.
Anyone here on this particular item? Any questions or concerns on this item? Number two?
An ordinance to approve rezoning by Jemetri Carter from RM-2 to MX-C in accordance with the preliminary plat by Bowden and Webb, Inc., dated 12/13/2019, concerning 508 South Range Road, Charles Barsha.
Wait for it to come back up. Zach, I'll do this from my laptop, if that's all right. You can switch it over. Give me one second for it to come up. Okay. So, I think the easiest way to start here is with the Iowa District. I think everyone can see, kind of in the center here, this blue area. I don't know if you can see my mouse. In the center of our GAS map, that's the Iowa District. I'm going to zoom in and show you some of the zoning that's in this district. So, I'm turning on the zoning layers now. And what I'd like everyone to notice is that most of the Iowa District is, in fact, not zoned, single-family residential. It's zoned multifamily residential. Just this yellow area in the center. Let me try to zoom in a little bit. This yellow area that's in the center, that's your single-family residential. All this orange is multifamily residential. And then when you see blocks of green, many of those are commercial, mixed-use commercial, MXC, or mixed-use commercial neighborhood, which is MXN. The Carter's property, and I'm just going to zoom in on that. Is in this corner. This is the property here. I'll try to highlight that a little bit better. So, this is the Carter property. And what we can see here is that we have a split zoning. So, part of the parcel, this top part, is zoned RM2 mixed, I'm sorry, multifamily residential. The lower part is zoned MXC. If I turn this off, you can see that a little bit better. So, again, this orange part is zoned multifamily residential. This is zoned mixed-use commercial. Interestingly, the tax assessor has the entire parcel zoned as commercial. So, there's a conflict between the city's records and the assessor's records. In most cases, the assessor's records will take precedent. What we're trying to do is correct this split zoning. Split zoning is not allowed. It's a single parcel. We've been able to go back to 1968 and confirm that this was split-zoned way back in 1968. The Iowa District addition overlay was created in 2005. So, it was split-zoned for a very long time before the Iowa District was created. What the owner is asking to do is to basically conform the city zoning to the tax assessor's zoning and have the entire parcel be MXC. I know there's been some concern about whether mixed-use commercial is allowed in the Iowa District. In fact, the Iowa District does not prohibit any particular zoning. It does place restrictions on what you can do on any parcel of any zoning. For example, mobile homes are not allowed. So, even though MXC, mixed-use commercial, would allow a mobile home, the fact that this parcel's in the Iowa District means it could not have a mobile home on it. I'm not suggesting that the owner is planning to put a mobile home on it. I'm just giving an example of a restriction that overrides what's normally allowed in the commercial zoning. I recognize that the way it came to the council, a rezoning of RM2 that mixed multifamily residential to MXC is a bit misleading. This is technically a rezoning, but it's actually a correction of an issue with the split zoning, to make it a single zoning. And again, the owner, Ms. Carter, who is here tonight, has asked that it be all-zoned MXC. She's currently planning, this is an investment piece of property for her, and discussing her plans. She's not really sure what she's going to do with it, but she wants to, if she does anything with it, she wants it to be good for the whole neighborhood. If she decides to sell it at some point, that's her prerogative. Whoever the owner would be in the future would still be required to meet the requirements, restrictions of the Iowa District with any future development. Single-family residential is allowed on the MXC. So, that's another option. Someone could put single-family house on this parcel if they so chose. I think that's the best summary I can provide. And Ms. Carter's here. If, I guess, if they want to speak, we could open the floor to them.
I just thought where Mr. Charles left off, when he said that a single-family home can be on an MXC. Someone said to me in the last meeting that I could put a single-family home there. I have no need of a single-family home to build a single-family home in that area. I have my home.
Excuse me, could you please, speaking the mic, please? I don't think they can hear you. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. Okay, what I was saying was, last meeting, I was told that I could put a single-family home on this piece of commercial property. I have no need of putting a single-family home on the property. I've had my home since 1951, and it has expanded from that, my personal home. I also have other investment properties. I'm a landlord, and I'm definitely not a slumlord. Anybody will tell you that. This property is already two-thirds zone commercial, MXC, mixed commercial. It just has a portion of it that's RM2. And from my reading of RM2, which is right here under my hand, and Mr. Charles can verify this or not, RM2 actually allows for single-family residents, also multiple duplexes, triplex, two-story, in my reading. If I'm wrong, will someone correct me? Okay? But as I said, I don't have any need to do that type of development. So, my sister, Jemetri Carter, owns this property. We look at it as a family property because that's how we operate as a family. So, in talking to Mr. Andrews, where he said that there were so many people concerned about what's going to go there, what are we going to do? That's a question I cannot answer today because there is no plan today of what will actually go there. We haven't made that determination yet. But the owner is requesting the MXC zoning for the future. And this serves us, and it also cleans up the problem with the dual zoning on the one parcel for the city of Hammond. We're actually trying to not only get what our preference is here as the owner, but we're also trying to clean up something here for the city of Hammond also with a dual-zone property. So, I told him that I'm best at explaining to him, this is in his district, and the residents in his district, what we will not do there, rather than what we will do. Because I have thoroughly gone through everything finable on this issue and on the Iowa overlay and all of this. And the Iowa overlay doesn't change the zoning on the property. The overlay has, say, in restrictions, not rezoning a person's property. Because it's already zoned, as he said, at least since 1968. The overlay came into play, I saw two things out there, 2005, 2009. Either way, this has been like that at least since 1968. So, I have looked at the restrictions of the overlay, and we are amicable with the overlay restrictions. We definitely do not have any plans to get rid of this property. And we don't have any plans to put any trailers, barrooms, selling alcohol, drugs, soliciting, pandering, and all this kind of stuff around this property. We're actually trying to do improvements right now to this property. Because it was extremely low. It's extremely low property. So, we've even done some work on cleaning it up and bringing it up to where it's not a nuisance in the neighborhood. Now, there's been occasion when I've passed there and found people, since it's a vacant corner property, they go pitch a tent and try to sell cellphones under a tent. And I've had to do correction on that in the past, at least two times since we owned the property. You know, we discourage that also. We don't believe anybody should be going on private property, setting up a tent to sell illegally and that type of thing. So, I'm here to answer questions. Whoever has concerns, I will answer your questions. But as I have said, no plan has been made by my family, the owner or any member of my family, of what we will put on this property in the future. But I guarantee you, it will be something beneficial to the community as well as the city. Because where this property is located is on the outskirts of Hammond. We're in the city limits, but on the other side of the road is outside of the city limits. There's a bluestow directly in front of the property. And if you live in Hammond, I know you're familiar with the bluestow. Okay? That whole little section up in there, the way I see it, is leading to mixed commercial anyway. Because right now, the other side, the outer-city limits part of it, is eyesore. I don't think, you know, the city approves of the activity and that type of thing going on there. We're trying to change something. We're trying to correct a problem, rather than creating a problem. We don't create problems. The property is already zoned, dual-zone, MXC, two-thirds of it, one-third of it, RM2, which does allow multifamily housing. So, I wanted to correct that from the minutes of the last time when the councilwoman said that I could put a single-family home. There, I have no need of a single-family home. And that's not why I'm here, to try to get single-family home in Hammond. Okay? But if there are questions about what the future looks like, because even when it is decided what we will develop there, it still has to come back to planning and the city council for approval, permits, and this type of thing. So, we're trying to straighten this up today as far as the dual zoning on the property. The overlay, right now, is premature. Except, I will tell you, standing here, that I'm in compliance with the restrictions of the Iowa overlay. I have read it, I have studied it, and I'm on board. So, what can I answer for the public here tonight?
Let me just, there was a question about what RM2 allows. It's up to two-family residences. So, a duplex or even a two-story duplex apartment-type building we have allowed, but triplexes, quadrexes would not be, just to clarify that.
Still not in the development of a duplex.
Anyone else? Ms. Karen?
Hello. Karen Walston of, what is my address? 404,000 Terry Street. There's a few of us here, and we are members of the Iowa District Neighborhood, and we're property owners. And we worked on the overlay. So, we're very familiar with the overlay. And we are concerned about this rezoning proposal. As was stated, the vacant lot at 508 South Range is within the boundaries of the Iowa Overlay District. And that is Section 8.4 of the Hammond Unified Development Code, UDC, the purpose of which is to preserve and secure the single-family residential character of the neighborhood. The proposed rezoning does not meet the city's rezoning criteria, in that it is not consistent with the area's designed designated context, that's criteria two, does not reinforce the existing or planned character of the neighborhood, criteria three, and is not appropriate for the development allowed in the District. And I'll explain that in a moment. It's the zoning district. Just to let you all know now, ma'am, I know that you said you went over the overlay however, I think you missed a part that, the restriction, that any new development on properties within the overlay district is supposed to be single-family housing, regardless of, regardless of the underlying zoning. So, it doesn't, in this case, with this overlay, and we can ask lawyer to confirm that.
May I interject? I think that is a misreading of the overlay. The overlay does not prohibit any zonings. It does prohibit certain uses of property.
That's what I'm saying.
It also grandfathers in existing properties. So, if a property rezoned RM2, if a property rezoned MXC, it grandfathers in those properties.
Well, again, I guess we'll have to ask lawyer for the interpretation of the code because if it's a vacant lot, it says that anything coming there has to be a single-family home.
I don't believe that's what it says. I believe that the city attorney's already weighed in on that.
It says it restricts any new development on properties within the overlay district to single-family housing regardless. I'm sorry, I don't have it with me. You ran into an issue because of your property.
Do anybody else want to speak on this while they get this here straight?
Um, when they finish over there, I have something. Uh, yes, matter of fact. If we can change places and I come over with Mr. Kudran with this.
Well, ma'am, I'm the one who's speaking about, that what we're trying to find is easier if we had a copy. I'm sorry, I didn't print the copy.
Are we allowed to go over to him at the same time? I don't want to break the rules of the council here.
My understanding, I lived in that neighborhood, and those property was regular property. And my understanding, I was confused. I was trying to see, was it commercial property? Now, because I've seen the zone signs. Can anybody answer that?
The property, as it's displayed up here, I'll highlight it again. Bear with me one second. So, what you see highlighted is the property. It's about a .42-acre parcel. Part of the property up here at the top is zoned multifamily residential, RM2, not single-family. And part of the property at the bottom is zoned MXC, commercial. And this split zoning has existed since at least 1968, possibly before then, but for many years prior to the creation of the Iowa District. So, those zonings, those uses are grandfathered in by the Iowa District overlay. There are still restrictions that the Iowa District applies that says there are certain things you cannot do, but there's nothing in the Iowa District overlay that says you cannot have a piece of property that has been zoned that way since, like I said, the '60s.
So, if someone builds there, you know, you got different things there, if they want to build like?
You have to talk into the mic, ma'am. You have to talk into the mic.
If they want to build like a store or anything, can they build it there? Because I know those property was homeowners property back in the days, and like you said, go back so many years, what it was and stuff.
So, it, like I said, we went back to 1968. That's pretty much as far back as the city records will go.
Yeah.
That is many, many years before the Iowa District was created in 2005. So, there, I don't know how long it's been a vacant lot. I don't know if it's been a vacant lot since the '60s, but it's been that split zoning since that time. It's never been corrected, although the tax assessor, I just learned this tonight, Ms. Gwendolyn presented this to me, their records indicate it is all commercial. So, you know, part of this effort is to align the city's zoning with the tax assessor's zoning, which shows it all is commercial.
All right, thank you.
All right.
There's no prohibition that says you can only use it for single-family residents. There's no restriction.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm just glad y'all.
Right, step right in, Ms. Jean.
I'm Jean Voorhees from Hammond, Louisiana, on South Holly Street. I missed the first part of the discussion. I'm sorry, I had a family crisis at the wrong time. But I would just like to raise the issue of fairness. You know, this is a city, a small city, and we have a lot of community involvement. We have a lot of people like myself that come and annoy you on a regular basis about all sorts of things that drive us nuts. And the, kind of the heart of that, especially now when our country is, you know, really strained with so many of these big issues about who we are and what we're about, it breaks my heart to think that in our little town here, that should be hopefully insulated from those kinds of factors, that there will be some sense of fairness and honoring the work of the community. I was involved, as were some of the other folks that are here, when the Iowa District was created. We worked our butts off. I mean, we felt strongly about it. We don't have, it's not like just a subdivision with people coming and going all the time. This is a very stable, established community. And we felt very strongly that we wanted it to remain single-family, because there were so many houses in our neighborhood, like mine, great big old wooden multi-room houses. And there was a real strong push at that time for those houses to be bought up by folks from outside the area, maybe out of state, I don't know. They would buy these big old houses, and then they would renovate them and divide them up into apartments and rent them out to college students. So, one day, you'd have Mrs. Grundy living next door in her nice two-story, very, very old building. And then, six months later, you would have 10 college students living there, you know, with their cars parked all around the area and having parties until midnight. I'm not opposed to college students, but when you have that kind of a neighborhood, it's worth fighting for, and we fought for it. And I thought, we won. It took a long time, a whole long time. And the whole idea was to maintain that chunk of land, that neighborhood, that community, for single-family dwellings. And year after year, it's chewed on and chewed on. It's like the way you eat a cookie. You nibble here, and you nibble here, and you nibble there. And each thing that is in there, like is happening right here, each concession where a piece of the Iowa District is given a more commercial zoning, that then becomes the argument for the one next to it and the one behind it. And it just kind of gets eroded. And I just want to speak for those of us that worked so hard and worked with the council to develop the Iowa District and put it in place to protect the single-family nature of that neighborhood and that community. And if you end up taking, you know, this way and that way and put little grocery stores and whatever all throughout it, it will all have been in vain, and that makes me sad. Thank you.
Um, that sent my head in a spin because I don't think what I'm presenting here tonight has anything to do with what she's talking about, bringing college students in and all that kind of stuff, because I think I've made myself clear, I'm not interested in doing any type of landlord situation there or anything. And what the lady before her, and I'm sorry, I can't call names because I'm not sure I'm catching these names, was asking Mr. Kudran to weigh in on, actually, is the Iowa overlay, which I'm going to ask Mr. Charles to explain. As far as fairness, I can take the same thing that's on overhead that Mr. Charles can produce, and I can tell you exactly where MXCs are, MXNs are. I can tell you when they were changed in this city. And we're not anywhere near single-family residents, the hub of Hammond, single-family residents. We're on the outskirts of Hammond, where most of the people out there don't even have transportation, but they walk to and fro to get whatever they need. So any development on our part out there would be something to benefit the people that live there and in the surrounding area, something they can benefit from since they're on the outskirts. They don't have convenience stores and all these luxuries of the inner city. But they can access hypothetically a nice restaurant, family restaurant or something where they can come in and sit in as a family and enjoy a meal together or something. And this is hypothetical, but this is how we think, you know? We're not trying to bring college students in and all of that. I'm sure Southeast, I'm a Southeastern grad, I'm sure there's plenty housing for the students around the Southeastern area that we don't need to create on the outskirts with private property, housing to students out there or anything that's negative to the people that live in the community. I have read what the people in the community have said to bring about the Iowa overlay. I told you, I'm on board with it. I don't have a problem with it, nor complying. But we're already zoned MXC predominantly, and this has been there since at least 1968. And I can show you every property on this map. And when zoning changed and this type of thing, even the ones that came about after the overlay. And we have some very close to us because just on the other side of the block adjoining the back, the back of John's Owl property, you have two lots there that are LLCs in a RM2. I can tell you exactly who they're owned by. At 1012 East Mary Avenue, you got the Greenland Enterprises LLC. You also have the HWM2S LLC. That's who owns that property that are John's Owl property line, the North property line. The front is on East Mary, and we're on South Range, and the other side is East Park Street, with us being in the city limits and across the street out of the city limits. You go down the street, you got MXN. You go up another block to East Morrison Avenue, you got nothing but MXCs from Range Road all the way in the west direction back toward First Guaranteed Bank, all in that section.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Ms. Jair?
Geraldine Bennett. I live on East Mary, at 1017 East Mary. And I think she referenced something about, I want to be sure, because there are only single-family dwellings in that whole area. There are no, there may be one duplex that was grandfathered in when the Iowa district, overlay district was formed, but that's it. All of the houses around there, all of the properties, they are single-family owned houses. There are no duplexes and commercial properties on this, on our side of Range Road. So we are asking that it remains that way, not to allow apartments and commercial buildings and things like that. The property that she mentioned, some of that is, it's vacant now, but we're still, all of the houses all around there, single-family dwellings. Thank you.
All right. Hammond City Council, regular session agenda, 6:04 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews?
Present.
Councilman Leon?
Present.
Councilman Wells?
Present.
Councilman DiVittorio? Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Present.
At this time, I'll ask Pastor Taylor to please come up and give us our prayer.
Heavenly and gracious Father, Almighty and eternal God, Creator and Maker of all, we simply come to you this evening to ask that you continue to be in our presence, continue to forgive us for what we have done wrong and help us to do what is right. Guide the city council, Lord, guide those who are involved on the inside and outside. Allow us to learn to work together to make it a better city. We give you the honor, we give you the praise, in the mighty, precious, sacred, beautiful, magnificent, and powerful and perfect name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen. At this time, all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute.
I present allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can I get an approval of our February 11, 2025 minutes of our meeting, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
I'm staying. All right. Let's see, presentation. Major Bradley Hayes?
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Bradley Hayes, and I'm here to speak to you tonight about the Topla Hammond program. That is not the beloved local restaurant. That is actually a cultural exchange program we have with our French sister city, Joie Pantraine, which is also named for the lake, of course, Pantraine and Maripau are both the two twin cities there that we often visit. And incidentally, Topla means high five in French, so that's the reason our program got that name. The restaurant is named for our program and not the other way around. So setting the record straight there. When my family and I moved to Hammond five years ago, we were very impressed to learn that Hammond had a sister city. This is very rare for a city of this size. In fact, it's a twinning program. It's the international twinned city program that's very prevalent in Europe, elsewhere internationally, but here in America, you only see it in very large cities. So when I saw that sign right there on Railroad Avenue saying that we were twinned with the sister city, Joie Pantraine in France, I thought, man, this is a very progressive town to have that. The program was actually started in the fall of 1998, which is when our very first delegation went over there. The following year, in 1999, the French reciprocated and came and visited us. We've done exchanges every few years since then, and it's been a very successful program. The last time we had an exchange was in October of 2023, many of you may recall, is when the French delegation came here and took part in the Hammond Air Show. So now then, they have once again returned the favor. We received a formal invitation from the Lord Mayor of Joie Pantraine, and they have asked for our presence at their town festival, which is going to be held June 19 through 23rd this summer, 2025, there in what we call JP for short. So we are very excited about this possibility. Again, the last time we sent an American delegation over to France from Hammond was in November of 2018. It was in conjunction with the 100th anniversary of the end of World War I. So it's been seven long years since we've had any meaningful exchange with them, and we're ready to go again. So with that in mind, I just wanted to let you know that in the past, Lacy Landrum was kind of the face of the city to interface with our group. I believe Charles Leche is going to be doing it now. We're very appreciative for that. But more than that, we're also asking for something. We're asking for your support. We're asking for official recognition and maybe even the designation of some sort of status for our group in an official capacity. What we are not asking for is any funding. We don't need any financial support whatsoever. However, we do send a group over. Everyone goes on their own dime, and we take care of that internally ourselves. And the French themselves pay for a lot of the stuff when we go over there. There's a round of receptions that they host. And so more importantly than just getting something in writing perhaps from you all, whether it be a resolution or something giving us that official status, what we're really wanting to do, it's not so much a request as an invitation. We want to invite you all to join us. So everyone sitting before me tonight, you're officially invited to take part in this exchange, whether you can or not, we would love to have you and your prayers and support in whatever capacity you can extend to us. But again, this summer, 19 through 23 June is the festival in JP, and they've invited all of us. And so we want to do the right thing and put our best foot forward. If you cannot come, if the mayor can't attend or one of the members of the city council cannot attend, what we would ask, because as a former Army protocol officer who has served in Europe twice, I can tell you that they're very sensitive to these things. The Lord Mayor has asked, you know, for us to come, and so we would need to designate a proxy. If someone official, if an elected official is not going to go, then perhaps someone in our group could be designated to represent y'all, to bring greetings to their mayor, to offer tokens of goodwill that are suitable for the occasion, just that kind of thing, just keeping up the appearances and the niceties. So with that being said, I appreciate your time and attention tonight. If you have any questions for me or you'd like to further this discussion, I welcome that at this time.
Anyone from the council have any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for telling us about it. It's a great program.
So just one last plug. We're going to have the informational meeting at my house tomorrow night. It's going to be the first one, getting everything going. So 122 College Drive at 5:30 PM tomorrow night, and you all are cordially invited. Merci beaucoup.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Final adoption of ordinance number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance, excuse me, to approve a front-facing variance by Jacqueline Howard for repositioning of a new mobile home from LA Restore concerning 110 and 1/2 East Stowe Street. Charles Barsher?
As I explained earlier, this is a request by the owner to reposition her mobile home, so it will fit on the property. It's going to be too long to fit where the existing mobile home is. The variance is requested whenever the front door doesn't face the street. The planning department and planning and zoning committee both recommended this for approval.
Okay. Anyone from this public on this item? Councilman Wells, I know this is in your district. Yes, Ms. Jacqueline, she's in? Okay. Uh, I just want to say thank you, Ms. Jacqueline, for coming, and the community don't have no problem with it. Thank you. Anyone else? Pleasure of the council. Make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Final adoption number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve rezoning by Gemetria Carter from RM2 to MX-C in accordance with the preliminary plat by Bowden and Webb, Inc., dated 12/13/2019, concerning 508 South Range Road.
There's already been a lot of discussion about this, so I'll keep my comments on this time brief. Again, this is a split-zoned lot as far as the city is concerned. The majority of it is MXC commercial. That zoning, the split zoning, in fact, has existed since at least 1968. Iowa district was created in 2005. Tax assessor has this listed as all commercial, so the request to rezone it all commercial would conform with what the tax assessor has on record. The Iowa district overlay does apply restrictions to any zoning in terms of what you can do on that property. And I think I was asked to read a few underlined passages from the district overlay as it appears in our Unified Development Code. I'll do that very quickly. The Iowa additional overlay district's mission is to preserve and secure the single-family residential character of the Iowa addition neighborhood and the quality of housing and site improvements. The city has adopted this overlay district to further its interest in maintaining public health safety, to promote general welfare, and to abate and eliminate public nuisance. Current zoning classifications and zoning restrictions in the Iowa district overlay will remain in effect, and this is important for the council. Rezoning requests will require a 2/3 supermajority, so that's four out of five votes, from the Hammond City Council in order for the rezoning request to be approved.
All right. All right. I've listened to both sides on this item on tonight, and one word came up that I'm going to use in the world was fairness. So I've decided to table this item on tonight and set a meeting for this Tuesday at 4 o'clock for the residents and the property owner to have a meeting, and I'll be in attendance at that meeting. And it's going to take place at Macedonian Missionary Baptist Church at 4 PM in their fellowship hall. I've just talked with the pastor, and he's okayed that for me to move forward with that meeting. I think once we have this meeting, where everyone in the neighborhood could come out along with the property owner, have a discussion, and we can move forward with it that way. So my motion right now is to table this item.
That's Tuesday coming up. That's Mardi Gras Tuesday, just so.
Well...
That's okay. I'm just telling you, I was looking on my calendar.
Okay. Need for a motion?
Oh, second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Introduction of ordinance number one.
Introduction of an ordinance, request by Spencer Rossi to rezone 207 West Morris Avenue from MX-C to MX-CBD to better conform with downtown Hammond and the surrounding properties. The property is located in Council District 2, the Hammond Historic District, the Thomas Morris Street Economic Development Overlay District, and the Hammond Downtown Development District. Charles?
There are two very similar items on the agenda tonight. Again, these are introductions. I always describe these as the public notice that if introduced tonight by the council, there will be a public hearing at the next council meeting where the public will be invited to comment on this proposal. There's also an opportunity between now and then to submit any questions or concerns that you have to the planning department, to your council member. The current zoning is MXC, mixed-use commercial. We've had a lot of discussion about that tonight. MXCBD is mixed-use central business district. The CBD district is basically downtown Hammond. So what the property owner is asking to do is to rezone to a district that is more in line with the rest of the downtown area, or at least in conformance with a district that was created for the downtown area.
Okay. Anyone from the public on this item, the council have?
I'll just mention the applicant, Spencer Rossi, is not here tonight. He reached out to me, since this is my district, I talked to him. He kind of explained what's going on here. And from my understanding, MXCBD is actually, seems to be less, I'm sorry, more restrictive than MXC, but we'll discuss that more. And I don't have any problem with introducing this, so even though he's not here, I would ask that the council introduce it, you know, pending any comments by anyone.
Anyone else from the public on this line item? And read it before I move forward. Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion, introduce.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
No.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Introduction number two.
Introduction of an ordinance, request by Spencer Rossi to rezone 211 West Morris Avenue from MX-C to MX-CBD to better conform with downtown Hammond and the surrounding properties. The property is located in Council District 2, the Hammond Historic District, the Thomas Morris Street Economic Development Overlay District, and the Hammond Downtown Development District. Morris Street Economic Development Overlay District and the Hammond Downtown Development District. Charles.
This is the other one that I mentioned earlier. Same, same basic thing. He's asking to rezone it from MXC to MXCBD, which is more of the downtown development, I'm sorry, the downtown Hammond district. This is again, just the introduction, the public notice that if introduced tonight, we'll have a public hearing at the next council meeting.
Okay. Anyone from the public? Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Nope, same as last time. Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
No.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Introduction number three.
Introduction of an ordinance request for a street renaming by Councilman Kip Andrews to rename East Colorado Street to Laura Knighton Drive. Charles Barsher.
Again, just the introduction. If introduced tonight, this would go before the council for vote. At its next meeting, there'll be a public hearing before that. This is a fairly simple one. It's a request to rename East Colorado Street to Laura Knighton Drive. And I think Mr. Andrews could probably speak more to the details if he'd like.
Yes, thank you, Charles. Ms. Knighton is one of the oldest members in our district. She's turned ninety-five in January. So a few of the residents reached out to me about renaming the street after her in the district. I asked them to take up the process along the way they dropped the ball, so I ended up picking up the process myself. I think it's nice to be able to have things inside of your district, especially to give someone their flowers while they are still alive, somebody that has worked and lived in this community for over fifty-plus years. To be able to see that would give me great joy. To be able to see things in my community that mirror me and my constituents in the neighborhood would be great as well. So this was the proposal that was made. I only had one opposition to it at the beginning. Haven't heard anything else about it. Went to the planning and zoning meeting. It went by with a unanimous vote. So we're introducing this on tonight. Anyone, excuse me, anyone else from the public having any questions or concerns on this item? Any unreadings before I move forward? I make a motion to.
Thirty years ago, when I moved to this city, one of the first persons I met was Ms. Laura Knighton when we were working with the NAACP back then thirty years ago. And she has been involved in this community in so many ways for so many years. And I truly commend you, sir, for taking the initiative to name the street after her is well, well-deserving.
Thank you.
Could you give us your name so we can have it for the record?
Pastor Chip Taylor.
Thank you, brother Kip. I mean, Councilman Kip, thinking we a church. I think this is a great honor, but I think the only thing you left off, man, you didn't say nothing about Grambling State, Louisiana. That's what I was looking for you to say. No, I'm the y'all bragging when you people go to Grambling.
I didn't want to sweeten the pot that good, but yes, yes, Ms. Knighton and myself, diehard Gramblingite. You cut me, I'm gonna bleed black and gold. But yeah, she's a Gramblingite, so am I. And it just does me great joy to be able to see this, be able to see this done. I thank Pastor Taylor for getting up and giving us those words because, you know, a lot of people do a lot of things, but they don't look for no pat on the back. They do it because it's part of them, out of the kindness of their heart. You know, some people want to see their names and lights and all of this type stuff, you know? And the good book tell you, don't have the big head, let somebody else blow you up. But today in the society we live in, we want to do it for ourselves. So I'm just grateful to be able to see it being done. And I would just say this is going to be the start of many to change the face of our community. I make a motion to approve.
Introduce.
Introduce, I'm sorry.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
I just wanted to say this Black History Month, thank you so much, Kip, for bringing this about at this time of the year. Yes.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Resolution number one.
A resolution to authorize the Hammond Downtown Development District to sell, serve or otherwise handle alcohol during the Railroad Park Marguerite Walter Stage dedication held on Friday, March seventh, twenty twenty-five from two to three. The event will take place at Railroad Park, one zero six Northwest Railroad Avenue. Michelle Kendall?
Before I do this, Kip, could I?
Go ahead.
Okay. So we'll get to that just in a minute. I'm surprised to see such a full house here. I know there's a really special celebration planned for after the meeting. So I just want to thank Councilman Andrews for allowing me to have an opportunity to let the public know about our Communities Priority Survey, which is open now through March seventh. I'm the director of the Hammond Downtown Development District and this survey is an opportunity for our Hammond citizens to tell us what they want to see in downtown. Downtown is the heart of our city and we want to be sure that as we grow and develop as a city, that our work reflects and is representative of everyone that calls Hammond home. So I have some flyers here for people who would like to take it home and take some time and think about how we make downtown a better place than what it already is. We do have it on our website, which is downtownhammandlea.com. And then our office is at two West Thomas Street, which is right on the corner of Thomas and Railroad, right across from the post office. If anyone ever wants to come by and chat, we have some paper copies available there for folks. Or call our office at nine eight five two seven seven five six eight two for assistance. We really look forward to hearing from everyone related to this survey. Sometimes, you know, taking some time out and thinking about what is the survey really going to do? The more that we hear from everyone, the more that we can have people's voices be heard and have a better downtown that everyone is proud of. So thank you for the opportunity to share that. We are hosting a dedication ceremony for Marguerite Walter as Lisa read in the resolution. So I do have flyers for that as well to invite everyone here to celebrate. Marguerite Walter is the first director of the Downtown Development District and led the charge to restore the Columbia Theater, which has been a catalytic project for downtown and being the, having the downtown that we have today. So these are just two formalities for our celebration as a toast for champagne to celebrate her and the downtown that we have.
Anyone from the public on this item? Questions or concerns from anyone from the council? Any readiness before I move forward? I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Resolution number two.
A resolution to grant a waiver of the City of Hammond's Open Containment Law to the Hammond Downtown Development District for the Railroad Park Marguerite Walter Stage dedication held on Friday, March seventh, twenty twenty-five from two to three PM. The event will take place at Railroad Park, one zero six Northwest Railroad Avenue. Michelle Kendall?
Same as stated.
Anyone from the public on this particular item? Questions or concerns from anyone from the council? Any readiness before I move forward? I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Michelle, can I get one?
Resolution number three.
A resolution to approve AK Food Mart located at one nine one zero South Morrison Boulevard, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero three to obtain a permit for a convenience store. The owner is AK Food Mart LLC. Charles Barsher.
My understanding is that the owner has met all the requirements for this and I understand their presence, so I'll allow them to come up.
My name's Lapri Singh and I need the permit for the alcohol on the convenience store located on nineteen ten South Morrison Boulevard, Hammond.
This is for packaged liquor, correct?
Yes.
It's due to a change in ownership and name. Right. Okay.
Anyone else from the public on this item? I do see that this is in District Four, but Councilman DeRitoria is not here tonight. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Resolution number four.
A resolution to authorize the purchase of two twenty twenty-five F-150 regular cab trucks for the Water and Sewer Department from Bill Hood Ford. Total cost seventy-seven thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars. State contract four four zero 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 two three seven nine three. Charles Barsher.
These are in the Water and Sewer Department's budget. They're replacing some older vehicles. We did go out for bids on this. These are state contract prices, but we had a local vendor that was willing to meet the state contract price. We, state law and the city does allow for a little bit of fluctuation to provide a preference to the local vendor. So I think it's about three percent over the typical state contract price, which would be out of the city limits. My understanding is one of the vehicles is twenty years old. The other vehicle is fifteen to twenty years old. So we're replacing those with newer vehicles.
Okay. Anyone from the public on this item? Counsel?
Thank you for going to a local. I know that's always the comment is why we aren't using local people, so thank the administration for doing that.
Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Resolution number five.
A resolution to authorize the purchase of a twenty twenty-five F-150 extended cab truck for the Parks and Ground Department from Bill Hood Ford. Total cost forty-two thousand one hundred and seven dollars. State contract four four zero 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 two three seven nine three.
Similar to the previous one, this is in the Streets Department's budget. There was a vehicle that was wrecked, so this would be replacing that vehicle. Same thing, we went out for state for bids. There was a local vendor that agreed to make the state contract price plus a little bit percentage for being local.
Okay. Anyone from the public on this item? Question from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number six.
A resolution to authorize the purchase of two twenty twenty-five F-150 extended cab trucks for the Streets Department from Bill Hood Ford. Total cost eighty-four thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars. State contract four four zero 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 two three seven nine three.
These are also in the budget for, in this case, the Streets Department. One of these is going to be used, they're replacing two existing trucks and allowing the two older trucks to be used in a different capacity. So one of those older trucks, they'll be using as a fuel truck. The other one's going to be used for transporting materials and supplies. When we surplus equipment, it has to go out to the maintenance facility. So they're trying to maximize the use of the older vehicles and replace them with some new ones. Again, state contract pricing, there was a local vendor that was, same local vendor that was willing to meet that pricing and were allowed by state law to adjust that by up to three percent.
Okay. Anyone from the public on this item? Any questions or concerns from anyone on the council?
Yes, I do. Charles, are we going to be able to put tracking devices on all these new vehicles?
Yes, that's actually in the works. If you give me one second. So far, we have done, I know we did the building department, the tracking devices are in the building department. We're in the process of adding the tracking devices to some of the equipment, like stump grinders, backhoes, excavators, lawn mowers. So that is in process. I don't have a list of all the vehicles that have been tagged so far, but that's underway. Yes, sir.
Okay. Before anybody get in these vehicles, could we make sure we have tracking devices on them?
I can certainly make that request to IT. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Sal Niccolosi, Hammond. Charles, what about the trucks and stuff that y'all have? Y'all selling those to who?
So there was, one of the vehicles was wrecked, so that was being replaced. It was totaled, basically. In one case, they're taking the two older vehicles and I believe they're just going to have them as essentially surplus vehicles, backup vehicles. That's for the Water and Sewer Department. Those vehicles are like fifteen to twenty years old each. And in the case of Streets Department, they are replacing two older vehicles. They're going to keep the older vehicles in the pool, but they're going to change the use. So like right now, the Streets Director is driving a truck that's an older truck. He's going to get the newer truck, but the older truck is going to be repurposed as a fuel truck. So they'll be able to go out and fuel lawn mowers and tractors and things like that. We don't have to worry about cans being left anywhere or.
Did, like, the new vehicles that y'all purchasing, y'all get them out to, what, two or three bids? Or you just, how did that come about? And Bill Hood got all these.
So what happens is, the state Louisiana has a bidding process, right, that they go through. As a political subdivision of state Louisiana, we can then take advantage of the fact that the state's already gone out and solicited bids for things and we can either go straight off a state contract, which we've done in the past. That is the simplest way for the city to make purchases, particularly of vehicles. But because we've heard from the public and the council, we've started asking local distributors, local vendors, if they're able to meet those state contract prices. State law and city purchasing policy allows from a little bit of a percentage increase, so a local vendor can say, okay, we can meet that price within three percent. And if they can, then we can go that route. We're using a local vendor here in the city. Our tax money is staying in the city and we're buying the same thing.
Yeah, Mr. Wells says something about tracking device on the vehicles and stuff.
Yes.
The reason, you know, we've seen a lot of vehicles from the city going all kind of places and just wondering, you know, why they just traveling out of, you know, the area and stuff. So they will be putting devices on all of these.
Correct.
Now, that's included in the purchase price or is it?
That's a separate initiative. There's funding that was budgeted for that purpose and that process is underway.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Sal, Mr. Sal, they did buy the vehicles from Bill Hood in Hammond. So they keep, yeah, they keeping the dollars in the community.
All right. I get a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Resolution number seven.
A resolution to review and ratify bids received on two twenty twenty-five for Pride Drive Emergency Concrete Panel Replacement, project number four two zero dash one two five one three. Mitchell Roniger?
Good evening. Mitchell Roniger, Spangler Engineering, here to recommend awarding the Pride Drive Emergency Concrete Panel Replacement Project number four two zero twelve five one three. Mr. Robert Roden's initially brought this issue to our attention. There's a bit of a washout adjacent to the roadway on Pride Drive, about a thousand feet north of Highway one ninety. The existing cross drain pipe and catch basins need to get removed and replaced. They're just deteriorating, probably causing the washout over there. I have a couple of pictures available if anybody wanted to take a look at it.
Yes, I do.
Yep. The Streets Department evaluated the problem, determined that a larger project would be required to resolve the issue. Project includes removing and replacing eighty-eight feet of cross drain pipe, two catch basins and the pavement that's on top of the cross drain. Riprap also is going to be placed on the outfall end of the pipe. It's a thirty-day project, supposed to start on March tenth and finish on April ninth. We solicited bids from twelve contractors and had six responsive bidders. The low bidder was B&amp;B Construction Solutions. They're based out of Slidell. Uh, B&amp;B's bid was under budget and recommend awarding the project to B&amp;B Construction. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, ask your question. Look, I see, uh, the opening bid was Thursday, May the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. Am I reading this right?
Uh, no, sir. It shouldn't be the twenty-four, it should be twenty-five on there. I see that up there on the bid tabulation.
Yeah.
If you look at the bid summary, we do have the correct year on that one. I apologize about that.
Yeah, I saw that and I was just making sure. Okay, and I did ride out here looking for this, uh, Friday, and actually, uh, the mayor and I, we had got together yesterday, and I think I had talked to you for a brief minute yesterday. And I see they had combs out there also. So what could we do to keep this from happening again?
Uh, it's tough to, tough to keep things like this from happening. I, I was trying to go back and see when these pipes were installed. It's, it was tough to gauge for me. If you're looking at twenty, thirty years, uh, that they were installed, then that's the life cycle of, uh, a lot of those products. So it just, uh, one side of the road's holding up real good still, it's just one side of the road is starting to fall apart, and, and the remainder of the pipe is showing issues with deterioration. So it's just the, the life cycle of the pipe is starting to wear out, I think, at that point.
All right, and thank you again for bringing the pictures.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Anyone else from the counsel? Pleasure of the counsel?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Reports from the mayor's office? Any reports, Charles, from the mayor's office?
No reports.
All right. Any counsel reports?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Charles, and the administration. I see we got lights outside the city hall. And, you know, I requested this, uh, at the last council meeting, and I got with the mayor, you too, Charles, yesterday, we talked about the other list where, and since people, since we got, uh, a full house tonight, anyone that have street lights out, contact your council member, or council person, and let them know, because these lights that we pay for anyway, and they been out for a long time, especially in my district, we've been dealing with like about fifteen lights in the district that's been out for over a year or so.
Right from the hurricane?
Yes, since the hurricane. And on the north side, Charles, need to get a ditch dug on the north side of the Black Hurricane Center on Phoenix Drive. And Ms., uh, yes, ma'am, I can't think of your name right now, come on. Ms. Cox, I know I know your name.
Joyce Cox. Any Miss Sainte Fire address?
Just your city, it'll be fine.
Hey, Hammond, Louisiana. Yes, I live on Phoenix Square, and we have, um, been building some homes in that area, and they don't have any sidewalks on South Spruce, and the children are walking to the stores and going, catch the bus. And I'm just asking could someone, um, look into that, to get some sidewalks on South Spruce Avenue? And then they, they started on, um, Pine Street. And I grew up on Pine Street. I've been in that area over, um, I'm sixty-six, so I've been over that area all my life. So, um, they're, they started with the sidewalks, and the, the roads are very decaying, and, and the Second Avenue, it's got a lot of stuff going on, and we just asking you all to kind of look into that area, to clean our area, because we're building, trying to build it up. And the first thing the, um, people say that, the abandoned homes, the abandoned cars, the, um, things and stuff on Second Avenue, and the thing, the bad tractors, everything, they looks at that, and we can't build it up if we don't get any help. So that's what we're asking for help to clean Hammond up. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Cox. And Charles, we just spent a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars on Pine Street, and we need to get some signs over there, no parking on the grass. I mean, it's like the city just wasted money because of the resident. And I sit here and say this in front of everybody, it don't make sense to try to make improvements in the city if the community don't work with us.
True.
So we definitely need to get signs over there on Pine Street. Ms. Hunter, she's in the house?
Good afternoon.
Oh, I can hear you. Who's this? What's this? Yes.
She's the hunter too. Good afternoon, President. Vice President, Mr. Leon and Mr. Wells. My name is Chrisha Hunter from Hammond, Louisiana, and we're here to celebrate Wilbur Dangerfield, who represented District One with great power. He had a mission to start, to stand for what is right. Our community needs the same mission right now. And the mayor, in his absence, and Councilman, Councilman Kip, Mr. Devon, and Councilwoman, Ms. Carly Gonzalez. I know we can't talk about it now, but if we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting, so we can, um, talk about the incident that happened with Mr. Bobby McCaskey, so we can ask, if we can just get the footage or any insight on to how that procedure is gonna take place. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say this, uh, in reference to all of that, uh, your concern is my concern. I've been in contact, and my rule has always been this, before I make a statement, I like to have my facts. And the reason why I like to have my facts, because if I make a statement and it's incorrect, you'll hold me to that and nail me to the cross with it. So what I'm doing right now, your concerns is my concerns. I don't think anyone should be treated in, in that way, any shape, form, or fashion. So we're looking into, I know I'm looking into this, and I'm gonna keep my colleagues in, uh, informed on what's going on, and I'll be in contact with you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Friday, right before daylight, we had drug enforcement officer bust a door open. We called him Little Greg in the neighborhood, and we have to do better. And I will say this, sir, I came outside about five o'clock that morning, and it really hurts to see how the police department is being ran. I heard the chief interview. If you run, this what gonna happen to you. This can't keep taking place. Every night, everybody not gonna keep putting their hands up. And I tell my community all the time, and they know, do what's right. Listen, whatever they tell you to do, respect the laws. I tell them this all the time. Kip and I, we can only do so much. We need y'all help, but you have to obey the law. And I'm saying this to Little Greg, he just like my nephew. And I wanna thank the, the drug enforcement officers for how they handled their situation. He didn't die. He didn't get shot. The last time somebody got shot in the mouth, in my district, just right across the street from my house. I never want to experience this again in my life. If you would've heard the noise, I really thought somebody was coming in my house. And I see the judge here, thank you so much for coming. Judge, I appreciate it, and we can find a better way of giving out these warrants. This, forty in the morning, it's scary. If anybody coming in anybody's house that time of morning, real stuff, you don't have a chance but to start shooting, 'cause you don't know if it's your neighbor, you don't know if the man next door, you don't know what's going on. Please, Judge, thank you so much. Let's find a better way of giving these warrants out. From my, from my knowledge, I've been knowing the kid all my life. Yeah, he'll run from the police. Hell, I'll run from the police if I see a thousand y'all coming at me, 'cause I don't know what y'all gonna do. But in the meantime, I'm quite sure, they could've came by his house at three o'clock in the evening, seven o'clock in the morning, but the noise that they made, every time I hear a little noise right now, I'm jumping. Ain't no way in the world I'm supposed to be jumping like this. That's how scared I was. I respect the police department, some of them, they got good ones and they got bad ones. We are scared, the community, they afraid. We need help, and not only from the blacks, we need help from the white. We have to find a better way of finding good jobs for these kids, and they don't have to do these things. But we need help, real bad. Not next week, not next month, we need help now. Thank you so much. I wanna thank Mr. George Perkins, Jr. I saw the president back there somewhere. I wanna thank him for showing up. Look like Mr. Kip got your attention, you showed up for a meeting, so thank you so much for coming. Thank the city of Hammond, thank the council members, and everybody for showing up. Thank you.
Charles, I'm gonna set a meeting with you, uh, to discuss, uh, some annexation. So, uh, you'll be hearing from me probably before the end of the week. It's up to see if we can schedule something for next week.
You wanna annex, you're talking about annexing property into the city?
Into the city, yes.
Can we, can we have that meeting with, uh, with the planning, city planner?
I have no problem with that.
Okay. Let me know what works for you, and I'll get with them.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and in just a minute or two, right after that, we'll go right into the Wilbur Dangerfield Award. Can I get a meeting, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Meeting adjourned. It's just a moment, we'll go right into the Wilbur Dangerfield Award.
How's it going, sir? How you been?
All right, good evening again. Again, I'd like to thank everyone for staying over after our meeting on tonight as we move forward into the Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence Ceremony. At this time, I'm gonna ask Bishop Suley to come up and he'll do our opening prayer. Then after that, the Vice President of the Council, Councilwoman Gonzalez of District Two, will welcome everybody to the ceremony here on tonight.
Let us pray. Eternal God our Father, we come to you in the matching and adorable name of Christ Jesus our Lord and our Savior. We thank you for this day and this opportunity and this privilege and this blessing to honor one of the great leaders of this community. We thank you for all that are gathered here. We pray that all will be done decently and in order. We welcome you Holy Spirit to knit our hearts together as one. Not only this day and this momentous occasion, but in the days ahead. We thank you, we love you, we adore you. In Christ Jesus' name we pray, we say amen.
Good evening. As, as Councilman Andrew said, I'm Carly Gonzalez, District Two. On behalf of the council and the mayor, I wanted to thank all of you for being here today. It's a packed house, which is lovely. Thank you for bearing with us during our council meeting while we now roll to this and honor two very important people. And thanks to Kip and the committee for all of their work, which you'll hear more about. So we appreciate having you.
At this time, we'll have some opening remarks by Deidra Dangerfield.
Good evening. I want to thank everyone that's out tonight for being here. And especially the City Councilman and the Assistant Mayor, I want to thank y'all for continuing to honor my Day of Award. When I say I thank y'all, I thank y'all just so know. It's just a blessing that the City of Hammond hadn't forgot about what he, what he have done for the City of Hammond. And I want to thank everybody that's here tonight, especially the one that be, that being honored tonight. I want to thank y'all too. Because it wouldn't be for y'all and the people of Hammond, it wouldn't be no Wilbert Dangerfield. And I just want to say thank y'all, thank you, thank you.
At this time, we'll have our occasion by Danielle Sanders.
Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence. Whereas in 1926, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a preeminent historian and founder of the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, created Negro History Week to recognize the accomplishments of the Negroes throughout the history of the United States. Whereas in 1976, the celebration of Negro History Week was expanded to include the entire month of February and became known as Black History Month, a federally recognized nationwide celebration that provides opportunity for all Americans to reflect on the significant roles that the African-Americans have played in shaping of the United States history. Whereas many African-Americans have contributed to the development of the City of Hammond and their accomplishments impact, impact our lives through their works in education, healthcare, business and government. Whereas the Hammond City Council endeavors to enhance the council's relationship with the Tansepoles Parish African-American Heritage Museum, the Second Saturday Breakfast Organization and the Martin Luther King Junior Park Association. Whereas the City of Hammond desires to create an annual award to recognize individuals within the Hammond community, including Tansepoles Parish, who have positively impacted the lives of the African-Americans. Whereas the City of Hammond desires to recognize local, including Tansepoles Parish African-Americans, past and present, who have made significant accomplishments that have positively impacted the City of Hammond. Now it be resolved that the City of Hammond will present each year during the second meeting in the month of February, the City of Hammond Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence to a deserving citizen or citizens who has made significant accomplishments that positively reflects on the City of Hammond or who represents through their actions and commitment the willingness to go the extra mile and make a positive impact in our communities and the great city of Hammond. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call up Ms. Wanda Davis and Mr. Teran Perry and they will start off with our first presentation of our award to our first honoree.
Good evening. We have the distinct pleasure to acknowledge the Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence recipient for 2025 to Ms. Chantel Robertson-Imes. Chantel Robertson-Imes is a dedicated advocate for children and families, a community leader and a lifelong servant of God. Born and raised in Loronge, Louisiana, she grew up on a dairy farm in a loving country home shared by her parents, Nathan and Lorraine Robinson and her siblings. Here is where she learned the values of hard work, faith and family. As a child, she always dreamed of becoming a veterinarian. But God had another path for her life. Chantel earned a Bachelor's of Science degree in social work from Southeastern Louisiana University in 2003. Driven by her passion for empowering others, she began her career at the Louisiana Department of Children and Family Services before transitioning to her current role as a juvenile deputy clerk at City Court of Hammond, where she served since 2007. Deeply involved in her community, Chantel is a board member and journalist reporter for the Second Saturday Awareness and Action Group Incorporated of Tansepoles Parish, working to raise awareness and provide resources for those in need. She is also an active member of Greater Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church, where she sings in the choir, teaches Sunday School and mentors youth through the Children and Youth Ministry and Youth Choir. Beyond her professional and community work, Chantel is a gifted poet and jewelry maker who finds joy in creative expression. She is a devoted wife to Willie Imes, the very proud mother of two sons, Anthony and Nathan, and one daughter Candace. She is the loving and caring grandmother of four granddaughters and six grandsons. Although she didn't become a veterinarian, she still shares her love for animals with a multitude of sheep, chickens, goats and their family dog. Her life's work is guided by Psalms, the forty-sixth number, verse ten, a testament to her unwavering faith. Be still and know that I am God. I will be exalted among nations. I will be exalted in the earth. Chantel Robertson-Imes impacts, reaches far beyond her small-town roots, proving that dedication, faith and love can change lives. So if you ever think to yourself, what good can come out of Loronge, Louisiana? Think about this country girl named Chantel Robertson-Imes. And I present to you Ms. Chantel Robertson-Imes.
Council members.
Thank you, Ms. Wanda.
Those who know me and know me well know that I love God, I love people, I love helping. And I tried to write down some stuff all, all day, I've been just like, okay, I haven't wrote down anything. And somebody says, Shan, what are you gonna say? I said, I'm just gonna open my mouth. And I'ma let God do the rest. So tonight, when Ms. Wanda asked me, Chantel, who do you know, who do you know who would be deserving of this award? I started naming people. Never once did I think about myself. And when it comes to what I do and who I am, I just do it naturally. I don't care who you are, what you need, where you came from, who your parents are, what kind of car you drive, what kind of house you live in, what color your skin is. If I can do, I'm gonna do. And somebody said today, what do you want to be? I said, I just want to be what God created me to be. I'm gonna be just what he created me to be. So I didn't know Mr. Wilbert Dangerfield personally, but I had an opportunity to know Ms. Deidra. I met Ms. Deidra a long time ago. And Ms. Deidra is carrying the torch of Mr. Wilbert Dangerfield. And I thank, it's so many people here tonight. I want to thank my husband, my babies, my, my son Anthony, my daughter Candace, my children, my grandbabies, my siblings, my coworkers, my cousins, my judge, my boss. And look, I'ma do like I am in church. Everybody with Shan stand up. I want to thank my friends, my family, my loved ones. And thank you, thank y'all for thinking enough of me. I said, why me? Candace said, Mama, why not you? So thank you.
Let's give her another hand. At this time, I'd like to call Ms. Crystal Stanley and Mr. Chip Williams up to make the presentation of our next honoree.
It is indeed an honor to stand before you today to present the Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence recipient 2025 to Aaron McGee. Aaron McGee is a man of faith who accepted Christ into his heart and was baptized at twenty years, twenty years old under the leadership of the late Bishop Curtis Bellazzaro. He served his church and community for thirty years, embodying the principles of love, service and selflessness. Aaron is a devoted man, married to Latonya for twenty-eight years. He has six adult children and seven grandchildren, to whom he has imparted powerful lessons such as give us this day our daily bread. It is not, and it is also not how you start that matters, by how you finish, so finish strong. Aaron is also a leader and entrepreneur. In 2006, he started his own pallet business with just an old truck, a borrowed trailer and one business contract. Through hard work, faith and dedication, God rewarded his commitment by increasing the contracts, expanding his territory and multiplying his commercial equipment to operate the business. Aaron's true success is not measured by his business, it is measured by his willingness to pour into others. He continues to operate his business in the heart of the community where he grew up, mentoring young people who seek guidance. He motivates them to embrace their creativity, start their own businesses and become their own. He often remembers the words of his late pastor regarding business, little beginnings and big endings. Aaron's generosity and passion for youth development extend to sports where he has coached Little League, baseball, basketball and football. Through these programs, he has provided vulnerable kids with a sense of belonging, discipline and teamwork, reinforcing the idea that you must be teachable to be reachable. As a dedicated community leader on Old Batruch Highway, Aaron continues to affect change in the community by mentoring young men and advocating for families and strengthening the structural foundation of Old Batruch Highway. By partnering with Robbie Miller and the parish council leaders, Aaron embraces the idea that people are motivated not by what you say, by what you do, but by what you do, and that your actions speak louder than words. One of Aaron's most impactful contributions was his work to improve Mitchell Memorial Park. Alongside dedicated community leaders, he advocated for funding and resources to ensure children had a safe place to play and grow. By collaborating with local leaders, including Ryan Barker, who currently serves as Executive Director of Hammond Area Recreation Department and others from the Parks and Recreation, they successfully revitalize and furnish the park, making it more accessible for local children. However, Aaron emphasizes that there is still much work to be done on Old Batruch Highway. To ensure a healthy and safe environment for future generations, Aaron would like to thank the family of Mr. Wilbert Dangerfield, the selection committee, as well as City Council of Hammond for considering him for, for this prestigious award. I present to someone, I introduce to others, Aaron McGee.
I'm also, don't have anything to say on keep you guys on. But I do want to end with just one quote. If you read it, I really mean, that paperwork really mean and it described me. But I also want to say that what's really important is not what people say, it's actually what people do. Thank you. And let's give Mr. McGee another hand. I think this is one of my most exciting times of the year as serving on the council when we do this award every year. A lot of people think that I have a lot to say so in the process and I don't, I just oversee it. I like to put that disclaimer out there so they'll know. When they select the name, we do the vote and it'll be a done deal. But you can learn a lot about a person that you didn't know the night they get their award. Because you see them moving about, just like you see me moving about, I see a lot of you moving about, but you learn a lot when you begin to sit back and listen to what they have. when you begin to sit back and listen to what they have to say about them on the paper. You know, we talk about that old song that you just sang in the church, you know, about the life you live gonna speak for you. And it really gonna speak for you. And I can understand exactly, and now, the older that I get, what Dr. King meant when he said that God had allowed him to look over the mountain, and he saw the promised land. He said, I might not get there with you, but I'm thankful that God allowed me to see it. We as a people thought we made it in 2008, when Obama became president. We thought we made it to the promised land. With the Vice President we just had, we thought we made it to the promised land. But I stand before you tonight to tell you, we still got a long way to go before we make it to the promised land. And the only way we gonna make it to the promised land is that we put down our rocks and work together in order to get to where we're going. If you don't believe in a higher power now, in the next couple of months, before the year over with, you're gonna believe in some type of power outside of yourself. All you got to do is pay attention to what's going on in front of you, 'cause the Bible is fulfilling itself every day. I'm sorry I gotta talk a little scripted to you, did I hurt somebody's feeling, I'm sorry. You send me an email, we'll deal with that disclaimer later. But I'm a preacher, I'ma speak my heart tonight. We'll deal with how we have to deal, because the Bible is fulfilling itself daily in front of us. I've been hearing this saying all my life, we're living in our last day. You're living in your last day, the first day you take your breath until you close your eyes. But whatever you do in those days, that's what matters, and that's what count. The only way we can change him is one step at a time, together. The only way we can change Louisiana, Tancho Parrish, one step at a time, together. The only way we can change our country, one step at a time, together. We have to do all of this together. You're ready to put your boots on, you're ready to strap up. And what I mean by strap up, I'm talking about fully covered up with the Word of the Lord in order to move forward in these days. It might be tight, it might look rough, but I've never seen the righteous forsaken, nor his seed begging for bread. So if he provided for the children of Israel, what make you think he ain't gonna provide for you today? Congratulations to our honorees on tonight. Continue to do what you've been doing, and that's living your life out in front of us to help us to try to be better people. Strive to be the best that you can be. Are we perfect? No. Are we gonna have trials and tests? Yes. But it's the way we approach the trial, it's the way we take the test that shows the true character and nature of who we are. It takes a lot to sit here in this seat. Could I take all the hits, all the good paths, all the bad things? I take the hits. So I say, God, why me? He said, why not you? My grace is sufficient for thee. You asked for it, I gave it to you. Just pray about it and move forward. So if we get ready to close out the month of Black History, what better way to close it out? Because to me, Black History is three sixty-five all the way around. Because without all people, we wouldn't have no people. So it took all of us to make where we are right now. It just took the backs of others to get a lot of other stuff done. But we are still His people, who are called by His name. We just need to humble ourselves and seek His face. Lean not to your own understanding, 'cause your own understanding get you in trouble. But in all thy ways, acknowledge Him, and He will direct your path. So, in my closing on tonight, I'll bless the food, and I'll ask our recipients to come back up again along with their families, and they can take pictures for the paper. But again, congratulations to you all. And may God continue to bless each and every one of you. I just know Mr. Dangerfield got a smile on his face every time I sit back and just think about him, 'cause we came out of the same church. So I got to see Mr. Dangerfield walk, I got to see him talk. See, a lot of y'all probably don't remember the little gray truck he used to ride around in, the little white Delta Eight Eight he used to ride around in. I'ma go back a little further, I'ma close my mouth, 'cause I might tell my age, the telephone truck he used to ride around in. So I was able to see this, live right out in front of me, the man that he was and what he stood for. Father, we thank you on this night. We give you glory, we give you honor, we give you praise just for who you are. Father God, if there's ever a time we need you, we need you right now. Father God, we ask that you continue to look down upon us, continue to touch our hearts, continue to touch our minds, continue to give us the peace that surpasses all understanding. Father God, we thank you for allowing your darling son to die upon the cross that we too would have access to the tree of life. Father God, cover us, continue to keep us and protect us from all hurt, harm, and danger. Father God, I lift up everyone here tonight that you continue to touch them, continue to bless them, continue to give them health and strength in their body, continue to give them endurance faith to continue to move forward in the days to come. We thank you for it all on tonight. We thank you for the food that has been prepared for the nourishment of our bodies. We ask that you bless it, prepare it, the hands that prepared it, touch them right now. Father God, take away all inner sickness and disease. We give you glory, honor, and praise on tonight, that even though we leave this place, we never leave your presence. Travel in grace as ours as we go. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.